An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning 17.23 acres of property located on Chester Road consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 042 parcel 142.00 from RS40 single-family residential to RM8 multifamily residential. Property owner Kathy Linda O'Nida. So if the representatives of the project will come up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Elsie Wallace and I'm here with Elmington Capital Group. Alongside me Ben Miskelly and JR are also here on behalf of this project. Yes, we are coming through for an RM8 rezoning and we would love to have discussions with you all. We are wanting to listen and hear both your concerns and address those concerns and present to you all our plan for this site just on the road. We are passing out some materials that we will be walking through. So if you did not get some and you would like some, let us know.
So I'm Ben Miskelly with Elmington Capital Group here in Nashville. This property, we know there's been a lot of conversation with this. Give you a little backstory. This was brought to planning commission a little while ago as a different developer pursuing it as a multifamily deal. It was, I believe it was RM20 then. They got approval at planning commission and then they had some conditions changed and they decided to back away from the project. So we are a second development group. That's why when you saw this come back to planning commission again, it came through us as an RM20, which it was denied. We heard at that planning commission that we've, that it felt like it was better suited for RM8. So that is why we kind of shifted gears. Elmington Capital Group, our group, we do multifamily, we do single-family townhomes. We do a mixture of everything, build-to-rent, straight rent, and for-sale products. So we, we do everything. We felt like the site, we went back to our residential group and we pitched it as townhomes and they fell in love with the site as well. On your packet, if it's still in order, that first sheet's a survey of the site. To give you a little bit of kind of conditions that changed from the previous developer, they were originally having an access drive that went up north to Boone Street. They had some conversations with property owners up there and financially it just didn't work. We looked at that as well. Our concern with that is in the land use policies in Fairview Ford, the very first land use policy talks about floodplain. And if you go northward, you are crossing the stream, you're having those environmental impacts. It just, it creates a site impact that doesn't seem to match what Fairview Ford is actually asking for. So with that, we went back to the drawing board with our townhomes, with our development, and we looked at Chester Road and then connecting through the commercial pieces. With that, Elsie held this. This is generally what we are thinking. We are thinking an internal townhome development. What we love about the site, you can see it in that second plan sheet that we gave you all, is it's wooded on basically every side and that's also protected area. It's area that would be protected. It's floodplain, it's treed, it's got some steep slopes on it. It's area one that we don't want to touch because it's an amenity for our development, but it also just, it needs to be preserved. So our idea with this is a standard townhome development. It could be rear-loaded, it could be front-loaded, it could be non-garage, we do all three, but something that creates a walkable district community that would be next to your town center that's in the Fairview 2040 plan. When we started looking at this, you'll see, we provided you with two concept plans. This is a straight rezoning, so these plans would obviously shift and change, but we wanted to show that we have an ability to lay this out multiple ways. We want to create something that is attractive to Fairview, that has a distinct look to it. We've looked at it every different way possible. In that range, we've seen it kind of land somewhere between 100 to 130 units. The plans with the garages is the one that was sitting right around 100 units. And then the one without the garages was sitting around 130. So that would be with a straight RM8 rezone. And the reason we think this is appropriate, when we started looking at Fairview 2040, we heard a lot of conversations about jobs and people wanting to live and work in Fairview. In Fairview 2040 on this page, it's page 42 of the comp plan, you start to see this diagram talking about who's commuting in versus who's commuting out and who's working within. And when you see that number of so many commuting out, a lot of times that can be an issue of not having jobs in the area, but also too, it can be a housing issue. When we started digging into it, we decided to just look at Zillow just because it's the easiest, most accessible thing. With Zillow on this map, if you unfilter Zillow and look for sale in Fairview, it comes up around 94 properties for sale as of this afternoon. When you filter Zillow at 350,000 and you do with a livable structure, which gets rid of landlots, it comes down to nine. When we dug into that a little bit more, two of those are just dilapidated houses that are really selling the land. So with that under $350,000 price point, you have seven properties for sale in the community. That tells us there's an avenue and a way to do something that provides an ability for people working those jobs, like your firefighters, your teachers, your police officers, giving them an ability to buy in Fairview and invest in Fairview. And that's what we think this will do. When we had some conversations, we also heard the biggest kind of knock on this project was the character map and the land use policy in Fairview 2040. But when you dig into Fairview 2040 and you look at page 67, the first objective, L U D C 1, talks about protecting floodplain areas, flood-prone areas. With all these townhome developments, that's something we feel like having the density allows you to do a little bit better. If you come in with a straight, build it as it is, it's really easy to start to have those floodplain areas become public lots. So they're actually our private lots, so they're on private property. Versus a development like this, it's a lot easier for a single owner to consolidate that and put it into easements and protected areas. We also looked at objective land use development, objective five. We felt this was the one that really spoke to this property. It says encourage development with a mixture of housing types from single-family to small multifamily development to create a transition between the commercial development along and adjacent to portions of Fairview Boulevard and Highway 96. And when you dig into this and read a little bit further, it talks about how you have abutting commercial properties on Fairview. It creates an abrupt change when you go to large lot, single-family, right up against commercial. When you start to look at that compared to the town center plan, which was preferred, you really see that this is, if we keep this at the existing zoning, it's going to create that transition of commercial development and then just straight large lot, single-family. Having a development like this allows you to step down and create that transect. We also feel like this provides an opportunity to encourage better development along Chester Avenue or Chester Road. Chester is a problem where it comes into Fairview. The gas station has two access points right there. Across the street, you have the strip mall with another access point. That starts to create a bottleneck with people and cars moving through that area. We've talked with the gas station, have a plan for creating an easement that consolidates those access points, so we will be aligned with the strip mall across the road and creating a fairer kind of more equitable way to go through that area. It also would allow us to extend sidewalks up to Chester Avenue, which was another aspect of the land use plan and what it asked for. And then finally, when you look at the preferred location for Town Center 3, which was the last page in that packet, you start to see on this, and I'm sorry, I just have a small copy, the town center kind of runs along Fairview Boulevard and nothing's shown across the street. I think we all know that's not the desire, that this commercial along Chester, or along Fairview, we would like to see redevelop. And you even see with the plan, it starts to blend and transition in this area. We feel like this site is adjacent to commercial and can really start to build up that town center. And the outage of retail follows rooftops, creating something that people can walk from and give them a place to walk to really starts to create that town center and that hub for Fairview. With that, we really just wanted to use today as a discussion point. We just would like to hear your opinions on it and ask us anything you want.
What is the price point you're looking at?
We do not have a number yet because we are still trying to figure out the zoning aspect, but if this is a for-sale product, we would expect it to be around that 350 range.
So you think that it might be for rent instead of for sale?
Our plan at this moment is to do it for sale, but if rent is something that you as a city would desire, we could talk about that as well. We have the opportunity to do both. Everything that we build, we build it with the avenue of being for sale at some point. We develop our properties and our amenities to make sure that it's the highest level of basically value. And with that, if it's a build-to-rent product, we're going to maintain it and sell it later. If it's a for-sale product, we're going to build it at that higher level.
So what, did you, did you come in thinking that it would be for sale?
Yeah, that, I mean, our intent as of now is for sale.
Okay. And then are we looking at around 80 units on that acreage?
Right. So what we've laid out now is around 100, it's right at 100.
Okay. And the land is what, about 15, 15 acres?
Yeah, it's like 17 acres.
17.
Well, has the Water Authority, have they committed to anything for y'all for sewer?
I'll, I'll let JR, JR's our engineer from Kenley Horn, he can answer that.
Hey, yes. So I spoke with Michael Rogers actually this week with Water Authority Dixon County and so we don't have the letter of reserving capacity yet. He's worked on it, but he's plugged our site into the models. With this amount of units, the bedroom count, and he says it works, we'll have to do a lift station on our site, but he said we have sewer capacity.
Thank you.
Speak to me a little more about the road improvements you've been talking to with the Shell station and are you talking about closing off that side access into the Shell from Chester?
So this is the preliminary plan right here. You can see as of now, we've gotten them to agree to doing an easement here to align with the strip mall across the road. My desire, now I can't speak for the owners of the Shell station, would actually be to get rid of all of these and consolidate it all back into this one access point. From a non-traffic engineer making a statement, these intersection entrances right here are always dangerous. That's your number one traffic issue that you have. But we've talked with them to get them to let us align with this, which is something originally we heard from planning, they wanted to do, that they wanted a connection there. And then we're going to continue to work with them to access that as one point.
So the alignment, you were talking about access, is that your property that aligns right there?
My property is here.
The property line is right here.
Okay. And then Shell owns to the, the left of that. And so you would align with the one that goes into like dirt cheap and all of that? And then, I mean, I, I agree with that, that entrance that's right before the intersection, that's always been an issue.
It's, I mean, there's cities with gas stations all across the state and that is, that access is always an issue. It always happens. And so we, we feel like having an opportunity with a property that has more density, we can start to talk numbers and dollars and cents with them to actually make it work, to work in our pro forma, where when this goes lower in density, that's not something that's usually easily able to be accessed and acquired.
What about widening right there at that area and a turning lane?
Yeah, we've, we have not ran a traffic impact analysis, that would be our next step. But if our traffic impact analysis told us that that's needed and that's something that the city wants, that's something we would do. We have said we would do sidewalks all the way up, but if the traffic impact says that this is going to create an issue there, that's something we would do.
And are you saying sidewalks from your development up to Chester or all the way to Highway 100?
From Chester, all the way up to Fairview. From our development entrance. And I mean, we would, we could continue down along our frontage if that's something the city would like.
So have you had serious conversations with Shell? Do you feel, how do you feel about?
We, we have this surveyed and figured out and have an agreement with them. So we're, we're 100% serious with this. And I mean, to be completely honest, we don't feel like this works without this. Because when you start, the more that you start to bring this drive over, the floodplain is over in here and you start to have a lot of topography issues. So that was our first conversation piece before we even did anything else, is we talked to them about, hey, can we work on this access point?
My biggest concern with this project has always been the ingress egress onto Chester because Chester's not a really good road to accommodate that many people as it is.
Yeah, and it, it starts like if you, if this access point gets pushed further this way, it starts to get a little bit more dangerous because there's so much topography change that when you come out this way, you just, you're not going to steer around this curve. So that's, I mean, this was, I'm not kidding you, this was step one for us, was this has to happen.
So you haven't executed easement? Should you close or what is this agreement you're saying you have?
Yeah, the agreement won't be executed until the zoning's in place. And so the zoning is kind of our preliminary step for any additional money that's spent for traffic study, further civil design, and the easement is drafted and waiting for execution.
Yeah, and all parties have agreed to it. It's just getting the zoning and the closing in place.
At one point, just thinking back to conversations, there was conversation about possibly having it more towards the north and going out to Fairview Boulevard. Has that ever been discussed?
So we have been in talks with a couple of these property owners. Those still are early. We've had kind of the most conversation with the bank and we've talked about a temporary access placement here. We, we would love that. And so that's kind of our step now of talking those, talking numbers, dollars and cents. We, we think that that's a huge asset to the site. We did look at going north across to Boone, but when we started having those looks and started really digging into it, trying to cross that creek and that stream is just, it's not a feasible option. It causes to us, the aspect and the benefit of connecting to Boone is outweighed by the sheer impact you're going to have on the environment trying to get across that area.
So in, in the discussion with, does the bank own the property or they just rent?
They own it.
Yeah, they own it.
Okay, so in discussions with the bank, was there a reason to, to not do that and go back to the Chester Road?
Well, the Chester Road was always, there was always a connection down there.
Oh, so you were thinking about two?
Yeah. We, we were wanting the second access point with the bank. And so we're still in conversations with them. They wanted to see where these conversations went before we got further with them.
And what's the topography from the rear of the bank to that access road that, that dies into their property?
It drops, I think, 7, 8 feet. It's not a huge drop-off.
Is it a wooded, wooded area?
It's wooded, but it's not as steep slopes as you see in these areas over in here. It's a gradual slope. But I mean, that, our intent's to keep this tree buffer line as intact as possible and then it would have a punctuation where you access from the bank. With this development, what we like about it is you're really not going to see much of this from anywhere. It's wooded on all sides. Acts like the homes on Chester are a fairly good distance away before you get back to where that wood line ends. As a developer, you don't get many sites where you have a clearing directly in the middle of it that works for your site. It's, it's pretty rare to have that. So we, we like, typically when you see a lot of floodplain, you're steering away from it, but we like the fact that that creates this natural buffer and will allow us to kind of stick this in.
I do like the, I think it's more favorable if, if it works out that you would have two ways in and out instead of just the one in and out on Chester. If that, you know, if that were possible.
That, I mean, that is 100% our desire. We, we want that second access point.
And we've talked to the other property owners along Fairview, so it's not necessarily just walk in, or being the bank, because we agree that it's best to have two and the other would be out here.
So like if, if the, if it didn't work out with the bank, then you could just move it down to the, to the next parallel road down?
Right.
And we would just adjust our site, our site plan. Do it on the job.
Mayor, I have a question for Tom. I've heard for several months now that we possibly are going to be restructuring Chester Road with widening and sidewalks, et cetera, and it's going to be a bond issue from what I understand. Where do we stand on that right now?
Currently, right now, there's no starting on that project. A lot of things are kind of tied up in what happens on Northwest. That's where our focus has been currently.
As far as Northwest moving forward with the road improvement there, is that a bond issue also?
Yes, that's entirely bond.
So Northwest takes precedent over Chester Road?
Yes, sir, it has. It has taken precedence.
I can't quite see that with the population that we have on, off of Chester Road. And actually, when, when school systems are back in session, Chester Road's also one of the outlets to get in and out of the way our routing is right now at schools up there, at the high school, the middle school, and the elementary school.
Yes, sir, I agree.
Anyway, thank you for your update on that. Appreciate it.
Mayor, just some quick notes. I think this is probably, probably more than we usually see on a rezoning, so thank you for the, for the, all the additional info and it gives us more to, to review and give, and feedback to you. But I think that if this was rezoned, a site plan would be submitted to our staff, our staff would review it. There's a traffic impact. I would imagine that that kind of, that kind of occurs additional there will probably require Chester to extend that turning lane bank. There'll probably be some improvements at that site, sidewalk connection down to it. So the impact that this will cause will have to be remedied through that site plan approval process, not, not through this rezoning process, just for a note. But I too have had, I had some issues trying to, or trying to understand the Chester Road intersection. And I think the discussion of the objectives from the 2040 plan kind of enlightened me this parcel and the medium density, legacy medium density, future use is one of the only parcels that's this close to Highway 100 and Fairview Boulevard and this close to that town center overlay. And some of these transitional objectives, I think this is a great parcel. We're going straight from commercial town center into potential multifamily and then we go to large lot, single-family. I think there's a one-acre development right after this piece down Chester. So those are just some comments.
Can y'all go back to where you were stating that it would create jobs? Can y'all explain that again for me?
We're not saying that it will create job, I mean, it'll create jobs from construction spec, but that's minor, that's temporary. What we're saying is it creates an ability for people to have a place to live that work in Fairview now. So it kind of helps with that commute outnumber. So when you have the commute outnumber, we have an ability for people to live here that can afford to live here. Also too, the broker previously talked about a gentleman who was a teacher here that wants to live in Fairview, but currently has to live in Murfreesboro. It creates an avenue for people like that to have a place to live. When you start to look at those Zillow numbers and those higher income level jobs and people living here, there's nothing for anybody in that kind of lower level, medium level, medium traditional income. So that's our thought process with that. We also see this town center development. If this town center development takes off, there's a lot of retail jobs with that, there's some office jobs with that. This provides an opportunity for people who want to work those jobs to have an ability to walk to those locations. We think that'll help with traffic. We know that this won't be everyone that lives in this area will work there and vice versa, but we think that something can, can be an opportunity to create a livable space that people can walk to their work and places to eat and hang out after work.
Okay, so adding more people is going to help the ones driving out of Fairview to work?
Adding more, not necess, it could be adding more people, it could be creating a place for people who already live here. We have people that graduate from college, they want to come back home, they can't live in Fairview. They have to live in Murfreesboro, they have to live somewhere out further away. So we're creating places for people to invest in Fairview and grow in Fairview.
So can you tell me how this will benefit the citizens living here now?
For the citizens living here now, we think that it could provide an opportunity to have a development that connects into this town center. I also think this will help that town center take off. That town center right now, we're seeing the trends with office, we're seeing the trends of retail, it's a lot slower right now. We have an office development group that we're pushing kind of in our residential side to move around. For that town center to take off and to become a vibrant area for Fairview, having more homes around it will help that. We think that's a huge benefit.
And this, the rezoning, the RM8 is not, it's not compared to what's around this. So when we did the 2040 plan and we actually adopted it in October of last year, we adopted it as in this would be an RS40. I've noticed that y'all keep coming in trying to make it a RM8. So why do you feel we need to change what the people want from an RS40 to a RM8?
We feel that if you go back to the 2040 plan, it's, it's one thing with writing comp plans to have mapped parcels. It's another thing to actually write out objectives and policies. And so the objective says encourage development with a mixture of housing type from single-family, small multifamily to create a transition. This property creates that transition. Without this property changing to RM8, if it stays RS40, it's not a transition. It's stuck in the middle of commercial development and legacy single-family. And what we also see is by having that transition, it also encourages that side of Fairview Boulevard to redevelop. And so we feel like this is actually creating that transition. This actually helps create that town center.
So you feel that's acceptable even though the people wanted it to be RS40?
So from our conversations, going back to talk with the consultant from Common Ground that did that site, we felt like there weren't a lot of conversations about this parcel in particular. There were conversations about transitions and things of that nature. So when a parcel, and I, somebody may correct me if I'm wrong, but when a parcel's rezoned or annexed in the Fairview, it gets annexed into that RS40, which is what this parcel was. So when it was annexed in, it was annexed in as that policy and that rezoning or that zoning. When 2040 plan was written, that zoning was kept in place here. It wasn't transitioned, it wasn't changed. But when you look at the map and the policy map, all the areas around there are transitional residential except for this one little out parcel part that was annexed in.
I just, I'm just saying that that's what the people had decided. So I can't see why you would come in and change what our people had wanted, because that did, was in consideration when that was done, the 2040 plan. Things have changed because rezoning issues, but the people wanted that and why can't we keep that? Because y'all haven't lost any money, right? As far as, do you actually own the property right now?
We, I mean, we've invested in this process. But also too, our, a point to this as well is the people also said they wanted transitional properties. And this property is the perfect opportunity for a transition.
I don't, the whole transitional part to me is that would have been deemed transitional if that's what they had wanted, but they wanted to leave it to RS40. But that's just my opinion.
I see exactly what you're saying and I think you're following the objectives from it completely. When Commissioner Street, when you speak of they, who do you mean by they?
As in they, as in when I was talking?
When you were saying they, the people.
The people. I mean, the citizens of Fairview, the ones who helped create the 2040 plan.
But do you realize that less than 1% of the residents of Fairview participated in the 2040 plan?
That they participated.
I understand, but you're saying 1% is speaking for the other 99?
So then why are we, why do we have it if we're not going to abide by it?
I, I, oh no. I think, I think he is abiding by it. He, he, every, every one of these different points and these objectives that he listed, he's following them to the T. But, but what he's trying to explain is based on the zoning map, that's shown RS40. That, that's, that's what it, that's what it currently is. So that's why, that's what it is.
Correct. And that's what the 2040 plan stated, the people wanted to stay.
I, I, I don't, I don't agree with that statement. I don't, I mean, if, if that's the case, then the 2040 plan, nothing would ever get rezoned, it has to be what the paper says. And that's not the case. There's no, there's, there's no way that's the case.
Let's just, I'm going by the 2040 plan, that is what we adopted.
I'm not saying you're not.
I'm going by what I hear and see in Fairview as far as everything that's going on, and that's how I make my decisions.
Okay. Okay. Let, let me, let me ask another question based on your Zillow analysis.
I'm going to state that Zillow, it's not.
I'm not, I'm not going to, I'm not going to hold you to their numbers. But based on what you gave to us and the nine properties at less than 350, throw two of them out, that leaves seven.
Yeah.
That was a great discussion. If you rent these, that discussion was meaningless.
Right.
So these need to be for sale.
Yeah. And we.
That's the point I was trying to make. Sorry.
So at, at, at what point would you agree with us to make these units for sale to individuals and not be managed by a management company and people paying rent?
Right.
Because you want to help these people invest in here, then they need to own it.
Yeah. And we, we ran, like, we ran those numbers. And like I said, we, we build for sale townhomes just as much as we build for sale for rent. I can't make that commitment because I'm not the financial guy, um, which is why I looked at her with the easement. I'm the planner. With that though, like, these numbers are hard to refute. Like when you, you see that and we take that to them, we're, hey, the numbers are there. Like this is a for-sale product. We spoke with our for-sale development group about this and they were incredibly excited. So that, if I had to bet on this, 98% that they would get it. There would have to be some crazy market change thing in the next 18 months. But for what we've seen with numbers, we ran this as a for-sale product all day long. And with our for-sale products, we still maintain all amenities, all HOA, all of that nature because it reflects us. So with that, we build those to the highest level so that it gets back for a high value for a sale product. Yeah, no, you're, I would agree with you 1,000%. Like when I, it shocked me when I ran those numbers.
And I want to add, um, with, that's the reason I asked what you were, um, you know, what the price point you were thinking was at. I have, um, I own a small business in town. Hundreds of our citizens come through my business every single day. What I hear every day, day in, day out, is that we've got, um, people retiring who do not want to keep up property that want to live in this type product. I have, um, firemen, policemen, teachers that come to me every day. We want to stay in our community, but we can't because an acre lot with a house on it, you know, you're looking at a million dollars and most people don't have a million dollars. So, you know, I would like a mixture of everything. I would like senior living. I would like to see that our young people can start into something that they can purchase, resell and move up. I would like to see our people who are retirement age, if they want to move into a product that, you know, they can invest in, but not have to do a lot of yard work and they have the nice pool and clubhouse and stuff like that, be able to have that. So I think from what I hear from our community, I hear their voice in my business, hundreds of them every day. That's what they're looking for is something affordable that they can purchase where they can afford it.
Right.
And sometimes these acre lots with big houses on them, that's great, but the majority of the people can, cannot afford that.
Yeah. I, I understand that entirely. My parents just moved from an acre lot house to a townhome. And it was that exact reason of just not.
And they also have a hard time as they get older, keeping up that acre lot.
Right. Yeah, they just, my dad.
So I see, I see our community as having, you know, different products for different people.
And that with this layout, with these designs, we've looked at, we have bedroom down plans, which is something with a lot of our townhomes that I've enjoyed working with recently where it has bedroom and living space on that ground floor. Because a lot of times when you talk about senior developments, townhomes aren't the ideal scenario for it because they don't have elevators, they're individual units. But we have plenty of plans that have that bedroom down, that living space down so that they're not having to navigate steps. Which my, my parents just bought that exact plan. And so they have grand, grandkids rooms upstairs. But they don't ever go up there. So.
Do you have elevations of y'all's product?
We have a couple on here from our for-sale group.
We, well, and a number of our townhome communities also have single family homes. So we have a mixture of both. We have a few communities that have single family townhomes and multifamily apartments. And that would not be the case on this site, but we think that the mixture of those uses, like you were mentioning, Mayor Anderson, to have seniors and families and young people to incorporate everyone in one specific community is really beneficial for having a range of ages and, and product types.
And we, we have, we have a mixture of elevation types. We can do hybrid, we can do.
Party. Um, we've kind of done a combination of both. The detached, single family detached townhomes are something we've been doing a lot more recently. So it's built just like a townhome, but you don't share that party well between them.
With our new, um, city center about to start, um, I like the walkability where if, um, you know, people want to get out and, um, you know, not drive, they can, um, that's the importance of connectivity and the sidewalks to be able to, this, this is in a area where they can walk the sidewalks to the city center and back to their home, which I think is important to have walkability in our town center.
I mean, we love that too, because that provides value for us. And the more that that town center develops, the more financially feasible and better off this is for us in the long run too.
Yes.
Mayor, if I could ask a question to our engineer and legal attorney?
Uh, in, in respect to the two exits, uh, ingress egress points that the Shell Station has on to Chester, what would be the city's, uh, avenue for closing one of those? Since it's something that they're currently using and have used for years. Would that be something that the traffic study may tell us that one of those needs to be closed? And we have legal authority at that point? Or what, what are we looking at a process for that?
Mr. Johnson, I'll speak real quickly to the technical merits from an engineering standpoint. And I'll let the attorney speak on the, the legal aspects. But, uh, the, the applicant as presented is, is completely accurate that, uh, the current layout, uh, is, is not an uncommon layout, uh, in small rural communities across middle Tennessee. And it is also very problematic. And I think you guys traverse this intersection enough, uh, over your lifetime or your time in Fairview to know that, uh, that's probably a true statement, absolutely a true statement. So from an engineering standpoint, the removal of that, uh, ingress egress drive that is closest to the intersection would absolutely be, uh, something that would be welcomed from an engineering standpoint.
And then on the, on the legal side, the first step is that a traffic study and hard data to back up a conclusion that it is in fact a health, safety, welfare issue for the city of Fairview and that it requires the board to take action. So there is a process to do that and there's a way. Uh, I don't want to give you an off-the-cuff opinion on what the details of that process are. But I'd, I'd be happy to provide a memorandum to the board on that.
Thank you, sir.
If the property owner decided that they wanted that, um, that entrance exit right there by the intersection closed, could they choose to do that on their own?
I don't want to give you a for sure. It would, it would make that a lot easier, uh, definitely, if there's, if it's not contested. But, um, right now it's a public right of way. So I, I don't think they can make that unallowed decision as it is. It would still require board action.
There are three exits and entrances to that property. So I think the one at the intersection being problematic would be a positive no matter what happens, but. Anything else? Any other questions? Anything else you would like to say to the board?
Thank you for your time. We really appreciate it.
Thank you for coming and thank you for, um, you know, joining us in this workshop to help us understand. We will, um, adjourn until 7:00 PM where we will start our Board of Commissioners meeting.